Roll call. Councilmember Stacy Green.
President.
Councilmember Bob Hall.
President.
Councilmember Ken Palfini.
I am here.
Councilmember Susan Tavallaro.
Here.
Mayor Kim Green.
Here. Okay. Before we start into our agenda, we will be adding a couple items and pulling a couple items off of the agenda.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. There are two potential urgency items that staff is bringing forward. These are resolutions related to local transportation funding. In order for these to be considered by the council as an urgency item, we need a vote of two-thirds majority of the council to hear them based on the following factors: whether or not the items came to the attention of the city after the posting of the agenda and require action prior to the next meeting of the council. If the council can make those findings and pass that motion with two-thirds majority, then we can... Those items can be placed on the agenda for consideration themselves. And I believe the resolutions have been distributed to the council, and copies are in the back. Both relate to essentially claims upon the local transportation fund for amounts that are due to the city, so passing claims against the transportation fund for improvements. I would defer to staff on the particulars of those, but if you have any questions, my understanding is that this came to the attention of the city after the agenda was posted. And the county, according to the clerk, is requiring us to... They need these before the end of the month, I believe.
I do have a question, just the date when it came to notification, just so we know.
Yesterday.
So it's on public record, thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we add Resolution Number 16-2022 and whatever the other one is.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
2017-2022 to the agenda.
All right, moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry.
So it's up to the mayor's discretion where you want to place these on the agenda.
Well, we'll stick them on first, just to get them... So I don't forget. And then, do we need to have a separate motion to pull the other items? Okay, so those items are A, B, C, and F.
I make a motion to pull.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. We're good. Non-agenda public comment.
So did you want to...
Oh.
Did you say you wanted to do these now? The resolution is...
We'll do them at...
At the beginning of business?
At the beginning of...
I apologize.
Yes, thank you. So now is the time for anybody in the public to comment on anything that is not on our agenda.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. My name is Richard Dingus, and I'm the Executive Director for the Weed Chamber of Commerce. I have a couple announcements to make. One is the Weed Chamber of Commerce is having a mixer at the Weed Pub at 203 Main Street at 5:30 tomorrow, Friday the 13th, at 2022. So come join us for appetizers at a no-host bar to network and to make new friends. So we have several businesses in town, so new businesses, I should say. The other announcement is for the Steampunk Festival. We have moved the date to June 18th and 19th. And that's about all I can say at this point. We've been invited down to Placerville. They have their Steampunk Festival coming up, and because we've changed our date, they've invited us down, and they're going to help us put on our event in June, which is really great. They have an association with three big societies, one in Chico, one in Sacramento, and one in Sacramento... Or Sacramento and San Francisco, and that consists of about 10,000 members. So what we're trying to do, when we go down there on the 22nd, we're certainly going to take our flyers, and we're going to take our vendor forms, and hopefully we'll have enough room to put a bunch of people here in town. So fill up the hotels, make the businesses happy, and probably cause chaos in the town for about two days.
Nice.
Just one more... And one more thing is that we're finding an increase in visitors, which is really kind of unusual with the gas prices the way they are. But in the last month, we've had about 42 visitors, and most of them have been from Canada and Washington and Portland. So I don't know if they're heading south to go where somewhere, but just to let you know, it looks like our visitors and our traffic has been increasing, so that's it.
Um...
Yes.
The president of Cool April Nights and the head volunteer coordinator from Cool April Nights would like to come up and help the car show in August.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Sue. Thank you.
Monica Van Barren, 517 South Weed Boulevard. We received notification on South Weed Boulevard today that the road was going to be closed for two days, and I just wanted to know any additional contact person to get clarification for alternate routes, especially since it's going to affect morning busing and transportation issues, so just hoping to get some more clarification, because it was a very brief note.
Me too.
Me three.
Well, we will have to get some better times for you for two days. They're starting to do some crack scene, some parking... We'll come make people there.
Thank you.
Where are we, though, Craig? Where...
Craig?
From... We'll be coming all the way from Montgomery's all the way to the end, to that chip sealed.
At Siski... Or South Weed Boulevard?
Yeah, 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 yeah. So we'll just be doing sections at a time. We'll be moving in and out. Like I said, locals can come... And of course, they're going to have to come to get on Shastina, but then once we get on South Weed, it'll only be homeowners that will be able to come above South Weed or Shastina to stay on South Weed. So we'll work with you. It's not going to be a solid close.
When is that?
Next week.
But if we could go up around the neighborhood and come down College Avenue, would that help?
Uh huh, yes.
That would...
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Councilmember announcements. Bob, you want to go first?
Ms. Mayor, I don't have much other than we were just talking about. We, through the Weed Rec, we're working on a... Several of us from the community are working on a summer baseball program to start in June and run into through July. Just trying to play baseball in weather like this, it doesn't match. We're hoping for some... Be able to enjoy sitting in the stands with our shorts and our tank tops and...
Not our blankets and our parkas?
Yeah, and sitting in the car, yes.
But that's baseball season.
And we have food, too.
Yes.
Through the Weed Rec.
All right, Stacy?
Yes, Ms. Mayor. Just one thing coming up. Our Memorial Day that's coming up, please encourage anyone all over town in a sound of my voice, please visit the various cemeteries that we have in town. The volunteers at the Lincoln Heights Cemetery have did, over the last two years, just tremendous work on new flags, new buildings, increasing the landscape, and just new signage, all by donations. Nothing was given to them... Well, it was given to them, but nothing was asked for but from the city. So I think that's a great piece, that their volunteer is still going, and it's an excellent site, and I was very proud of it in my neighborhood, and I love to see all those flags going all the way around. It's just a great site. So please take your time and take your day to just go there and take a look. It's coming up. That's all I have.
Okay. Ken?
Actually, I just have one report that the Siski community resource center had the kids' day...
Excuse me. Excuse me. That we had a kids' day festival on the 22nd or 23rd of April. We had over 1,000 attendees. I would like to thank all of those that helped sponsor, from First Five to Wonderland Distributing, this, our city PD, our fire department, the museum, Park and Rec, Roseburg Forest Products, Crystal Geyser, Tri-Counties Bank, Higher Grounds Coffee, and Elizabeth Taber. And I'm sure I missed a whole handful of others, if not two handfuls. So I will apologize for that, but heartfelt thanks. Thank you.
All right.
And the Rotary Club of Weed.
And the Rotary Club of Weed. I told you I would miss.
I know. Oh, I have a few things. Saturday, May 21st, will be the free tire, vehicle tire... Craig, jump in if I'm saying any of this wrong. Vehicle tire dump day at Black Butte, down there, at Black Butte. Saturday, the 21st. I had a transportation meeting on Tuesday, and without saying too much about it, that's why the report came in on Wednesday morning.
Hey, Sue.
Yes.
Just a second. Back to the tires. There's a nine tire maximum.
Okay.
You might want to throw that out so somebody doesn't go down there at 30.
A nine tire maximum?
By law.
Yes.
Oh, by law.
You can't transport more than that tire by law.
Oh, even if you were just going to drive around?
You have to have a license to do more than that.
Do they count the ones on your car?
And the Caltrans is putting on that.
Yes, Caltrans is doing that. Thank you, that's great information that we might need to know, not drive around with cars in the trunk, or tires in the trunk. This...
Good luck on that.
Friday at the community center is Bingo, and you don't have to be a senior to go. Were you going to talk about it?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
I mean, yes, but go ahead.
Okay, well, that's all I'll say, and then Kim will tell you the rest. And for our group, CalCities has their membership meeting in Mount Shasta, which CalCities is a group based in Sacramento, that they have meetings all over the state, and they have chosen Mount Shasta to meet next a week from Friday. So that's great, that we get to do something up north, because it doesn't always happen, as all of us know. And that's all I have.
Okay.
So on the 20th then, right?
Yeah, Friday the 20th.
What time and place?
It's at the city park, and I...
I have 1:00 PM, but I don't know that that's right.
Yeah, I didn't write down a time. Should get an email for it.
We will, to register stuff.
Probably. Okay. Bingo at the community center tomorrow night. Each week, we're trying to add a little more as we get our grounding under us, and so tomorrow night, we will be serving food at 5:00. Then we have the early bird. I don't even know what that is. And followed by Bingo. And we've gotten approval to run the senior van for Bingo. I've had a lot of requests from seniors in the area that have said, you know, it gets out pretty late, and they don't like to drive at night, so they could get there, but it's a little hairy getting home. So if somebody wants to come and they want a ride, they can call the community center tomorrow and get on the list. The street closure thing reminded me, we got a call at the community center today, and it was a message from Pacific Power about a power outage tomorrow, and it sounded like it said it may affect 18 people. I thought that was an odd... Did anybody else get that message?
I got a message that they're doing some type of something, and it wasn't clear from Pacific Power.
I think they're going to do some drone footage. They're going to be flying around here... I believe it's tomorrow, they're going to be flying around and doing drone footage of the power lines and the...
Oh. Well, the power's going to be out for those 18 people possibly.
Yeah.
Between 9 and 3.
Some guy was in my driveway with an extender with a telescope looking at something, like, okay, are you going to say something to me? But I just got out and came to my house.
Okay. Well, 18 people just seemed like an odd number. And then along the lines of the cemetery, there is... This Sunday, the 15th, there is a cemetery tour at 1:00. So if you're interested in doing that and going, be at the Huaynema Cemetery at 1:00.
This Sunday?
Mm-hmm, the 15th.
Are they looking at those sites?
I don't know, I only wrote down cemetery tour, so...
Who's putting it on?
Deb Wilson and I think Deb Salvestre.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think that's it for me. Is Quentin here? I do not...
Yes, I am.
Oh, he's a... Oh, okay. All right, you're up.
Yeah, sorry, I wish I could be there in person. I'm actually at the California Association for Local Economic Development Conference in Long Beach. I've been spending my time advocating for a lot of our businesses' needs in Siskiyou and a lot of our jurisdiction needs at the state level, because oftentimes, they don't get to hear what it's like in rural California. They don't get to hear our story or what we are going through, so I've been sharing some of those stories. As you can tell, my Irish complexion hasn't been holding up very well in Southern California. But the reason why I wanted to talk to you all today is because of recent uptick in activity, actually. As many of you are aware, there's been some developments, there's been some moves happening around Weed in terms of new businesses moving in, some real straight transactions going down. And so in this last month or so, I've met with a few new businesses that are opening up in Weed, a couple retail shops, one that's looking at doing a kind of like T-bar type thing. And so I just thought it'd be a good opportunity to just remind Weed community members and the City Council members what resources we have available for businesses and residents in the cities of Weed. So I'm going to share my screen. I'm just going to go through a couple different web pages. Jeremy, actually, I have it disabled. If you'd be able to fix that. But I'd like to talk about a couple different programs that we have at Siskiyou Economic Development in addition to Great Northern Services, who we're partnering with, and just want to make sure everyone in the community is aware of these programs. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen now. And so the first I'd like to talk about is the microenterprise program that we have specifically for the city of Weed. And how we can think about this program is sort of like an enterprise fund. This is for businesses with five or fewer employees who are income-qualified, and you can be income-qualified in one of two ways. Either the owner is low to moderate income, and trust me, a lot of small business owners actually do meet this criteria. You'd be surprised. The second is if 51% or more of your employees are low to moderate income, and if you've got just a couple staff members and they make a minimum wage or close to it, you're going to qualify that way. It is a hard cap on five employees, but this program can be used in a multitude of ways. We can provide capital assistance to new and expanding businesses, and we can help them with funds on things from operating costs to... Where I'd really like to use funds is capital improvements, investing in things like equipment, really heavy durable goods. I'm working with a restaurant owner on replacing some of his stoves and getting a new fridge so he doesn't have to drive down to Reading as often to get food. What this program isn't is it's not necessarily a blank check to just go out and start a business. We do require that all of our applicants have what you would call skin in the game, so they are investing money or have, you know, operated a business consistently and that it is feasible. And how we can think of this fund is nudging folks over a hump. It's really that, you know, but for this investment, this project could be so much greater. And so really, I'd like to think of this as a cherry on top. This is a three-year program, and when folks apply and are qualified, you know, they could go out and have this big plan for this investment, they say they were going to get a food truck, and they just needed something to get the POS and their refrigerators and some of the marketing and signage up, stuff like that, but they're actually buying the truck. This would be like a really, really great program for that. The second, and it's going to sound super, super similar, but it's a little different, is we still do have some CDVG COVID funds for microenterprises as well. And these are businesses who have been affected by COVID in a multitude of ways. A lot of my restaurants, they have higher costs and everything. They're paying twice as much for frying oil, they're paying 40% more for beef, they're paying 20% more for vegetables, and it's really adding up, and it's hurting their bottom line. There's a lot of businesses who still, you know, they didn't fully get PPP or some of the other COVID grant funds, and they just straight up have a loss of revenue, and they've been sitting with that loss for years now, so we can kind of recuperate some of that. But then there are also businesses who want to... They're having a hard time finding an employee, and this is very common across the county. I can't tell you how many of my business clients are having challenges with staffing, and they want to pay a higher wage, but they can't. So this is also a great use of grant funds. You can use that to either add a new job or to give all your employees a raise. It's also for microenterprises, so five or fewer employees, full-time or part-time, it doesn't matter, it's just five heads, but we still have some funds available for that as well. The next two is going to be more directed towards community members in the city of Weed, and this is a couple programs that we're partnering with, with Great Northern Services. And for many households who have been impacted by COVID-19, who have fallen behind on bills or utilities, or they still have an outstanding water, you know, bill with the city, I know many cities have huge lists of folks who are still in arrears. Great Northern Services and us have two different programs to help folks with. The first is a subsistence payment program, and how this works is you apply through Great Northern, and you would qualify through them, but they say you've got all these bills stacked up. We can do up to 12 months of arrears that would come in a lump sum payment, and then three months of continuous payments after that. And so what qualifies? Mortgage payments, rent payments. Now, the California Rent Relief Program is over. Water, gas, electric, broadband in particular, that's a really, really big one. But as we see the cost of utilities going up, I know it's affecting a lot of our lower-income households, and so there is help available. And then last but not least, is the protein and produce program. And so as many of you are aware, Great Northern Services has been providing commodities every other month, thanks to USDA funding. We've now been able to introduce protein and produce to that program as well, and so this delivers to the city of Weed every other month. The last delivery was April 21st, the next one will be June 16th. They're going to be distributing from Great Northern Services headquarters in the city of Weed, so that's at 310 Bull Street. And this will include meat, eggs, milk, a lot of what you would call perishable refrigerated goods. And you don't need to sign up ahead of time, they have applications onsite, and they can get to you onsite. But this has been a really impactful program. I know some of these families who benefit from this, who have gone through some really hard times, and it's helped out tremendously. So this food's going to be available every other month, all throughout the entire year, and so I would encourage anybody who is in need to please reach out, call Great Northern Services, call me, and we can get you some help. And with that, if there are any questions from the public or City Council, I'm happy to take them.
This is Stacy Quinton. I just wanted to thank you for, we talked about the opportunities that you put through Facebook for people to get help with the businesses. I had a great response, and thank you for partnering, just it's feet on the ground and moving. I appreciate that as a councilperson, but thank you for doing those things and these type of efforts.
Yeah, and I would like to push it right back to you guys. I know you all are public servants, and part of your job is serving the residents of Weed, and a lot of that is communication, is that outreach component, and all the information, all the folks that you can refer to me, and information that you can share with them, it really, really helps the process if we go about this as a whole community. And so likewise, I appreciate all the referrals that I've gotten from council members as well.
Questions for Quentin? Doesn't look like it.
All right, well, thank you guys so much for your time, I appreciate it, and I look forward to coming to the next one in person.
Sunscreen?
Number six.
I'll let my mom know, I heard it from someone else, too.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Quentin. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
You going to be a public comment? Do you want to allow public comment on the consent?
For the consent agenda?
Yeah. On any item on the consent?
Okay. Does anybody have any public comment on anything on the consent agenda? Nope.
No, seconded.
Okay. Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carried. We already did items removed from consent, and so we will start out with adding in the two that were added to the council business and Resolution Number 16-2022. Is that you?
I would defer to staff on that.
Microphone.
This is our annual LTF funds that are supposed to come in December, and the Transportation Commission got a little bit behind by a couple years, so they're making up for it. Yes. 1622 is the 2021 claim, and it's in the amount of $103,018. And you want to hear them both at once. 172022 is in the amount for $152,430.
Can we do them both together?
They're two separate resolutions, so it makes sense to do them separately.
Yeah, so...
Staff can report them at once.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Two motions.
So my question first, please.
Yes.
So how have those funds been received? How does that work, that process?
To receive these funds, all we have to do is get these resolutions back to the county, and the county, once they receive them from all nine cities, then they will cut us a check and send the funds to us.
And this will reimburse us for things that we've already done?
Not necessarily. These will be kind of over-the-top funds, but in the past, we've used them for salaries and for patch material and crack seal. I mean, it's... I've never been able to put them towards a specific project, but this is a pretty healthy amount that we've gotten this year.
But by the title, it says streets, roads, and public transit has to be that type of...
Yes, yeah, only in the street fund.
Okay.
I'll make a motion if there's any public comment.
Comment?
No public comment, okay. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 16-2022.
I second it.
All in favor?
Do we need to read the resolution?
Not anymore.
No. It's not an ordinance, that's what...
Not normal?
Not an ordinance.
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried.
I'll make another resolution.
Another resolution.
A motion to approve Resolution Number 17-2022.
I'll second it.
Public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Yeah, I like it when it's an emergency and the money's coming to us.
Yeah, and as I said yesterday, I was... Or Tuesday, I was at a transportation meeting, and it was very confusing, so that's all I have to say.
So checks this way.
Quarter million dollars, good chance.
Okay. Second item, or third item, we would be now, and this is, "Council will consider whether to move forward with the sales tax, and if so, propose whether it should be a general tax or a special tax."
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Pursuant to council's direction at the last meeting, we have brought forward two alternative ordinances that would levy tax, a sales tax... that would levy tax, a sales tax, additional quarter penny sales tax within the city of Weed. These are based on the model ordinance that is required by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. The first one in the packet proposes a general tax. And a general tax, although it would require two-thirds of the council to approve it, it would require only a majority of the registered voters of the city for it to go into effect. Again, it would be a quarter cent on top of the existing sales taxes in the city. And it could apply, that money would essentially come to the general fund and could be used for any general governmental purpose at the discretion of the council during its budgeting phase. There is nothing else in the proposed general tax ordinance that requires the council's attention other than potentially the, whether or not to include or not include a sunset or termination date. That's up to the council's discretion. And the second one i- in the council packet is the special tax. Much of the ordinance language is the same, just based on what the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration requires. It's also a quarter penny. The difference is that a special tax has specific purposes for which the funds can be spent. And in the draft that is proposed before you this evening, that's under Section 15 called Expenditure Plan. And the description of the services are, are taken from the prior tax measure that was proposed a couple of years ago. And states that the city may use revenue from the tax only to pay for police and fire protection services, street maintenance, repair and improvements, maintenance of Winema and Lincoln Heights cemeteries, and capital needs for parks and recreation services. That expenditure plan is something that can be changed by the council before it, it goes to the voters if they so choose. The special tax ordinance also would create an independent citizen oversight committee, five-member committee, which would be a Brown Act committee, appointed by the council to essentially oversee the expenditure of the special tax money to ensure that it's only being used for the enumerated purposes in the expenditure plan. Lastly, there's a, the issue of a termination date. Again, the council has discretion whether it wants to include a termination date. It doesn't have to have a termination date. Or it could include a termination date. Both of these proposals are before you in the form essentially that we received them from the CDTFA. So what we are looking for this evening, what staff is looking for is direction by motion on whether or not to move forward with preparing the actual ordinance based on the language here. And if so, which of the two options council would prefer? And then depending upon that option, if it's the general tax, some direction on termination date, because we'd have to come back for the first reading. We need to know if there's a termination date in there. For the special tax, obviously, there's a lot more to discuss. What would be an expenditure plan, citizenship oversight, and termination date. And if I didn't say it before, special taxes require two-thirds approval of the voters and, and the council. So that would be sixty-six point six-six percent of registered voters in the city of Weed would have to vote in favor of the special tax in order for it to be levied. And with that, I would have to answer questions or field questions.
I have one, excuse me. The general tax?
What's the percentage of voters that need to have that so the public and I, and we know?
It's fifty percent plus one.
Fifty and plus one, okay.
I have a question. So in that language, it said only can, can, so if it says only that, only can be used on X, Y, and Z things, that's the sixty-six percent, right? That's the two-thirds.
That's the special tax.
In, can we, in the general tax, can we use a word that it would be used on things such as X, Y, and Z and not have it be?
Well.
Or you're gonna tell me why bother to do that?
Excuse me?
Are you gonna say why bother to do that?
No. So I think what you're talking about isn't the language of the ordinance, because I think the language of the ordinance needs to pretty much be what the Tax and, California Department of Tax and Fee Administration requires. But in the ballot question, and, and obviously in, in arguments for or against, those kinds of indications of budget priorities can be included.
Okay, I have a second question.
Does that make sense?
Yes. Yep.
Because we haven't, we haven't gotten to that part. I mean, obviously, if we do do a tax, we're gonna have to write the ballot question. And there are rules under the.
Okay.
Elections, yeah.
Yeah.
So as long as we, as long as we include in that list and gener- and other general governmental purposes, we're probably safe.
Thank you. And now I forgot what else I was gonna ask.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll, I'll ask mine while you're thinking. Maybe it's the same question. The committee, the oversight committee, can that be also in the general tax or only in the special?
Yes, it can be in the general tax as well.
Either one.
Okay.
That's a good point to make.
That's what I want, yeah.
Because people have shared that, that was the concern over between the last measure, what happened, where the money was going. I think that's a great point to add.
I think you need to explain that when you're talking about oversight committee. What, what do you?
Actually, David, explain it to us in our.
I think.
In our pre-meeting, so I'm gonna let him do it.
Sure, and, you know, I would, if the public is interested, I would refer them to the language that, that I proposed just from, from a, that's been used with other tax measures. Essentially, it's gonna be a committee, kinda like the Planning Commission. It, it's a committee that is appointed by the council of people in Weed. And their job would be to review the funds that are being brought in from the tax and how that money is being used. They often will review, you know, financials of the city to determine that information. And then the way it was proposed here is that they would meet publicly, in public, subject to the Brown Act Notice Meetings, at least quarterly, review the revenues and expenditures, and then also annual audited reports. And then they would make at least one annual report to the city council that would be presented at a public meeting of the council that would essentially summarize any findings or recommendations about that money and how it's used.
I, I think, Bob, it'd be kinda similar, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hall. I think it'd be kinda similar to what we do with the TOT, which will be coming up, we, next month, or is it July, June or July? June, where we disperse the funds for the TOT. This body is essentially the oversight on where that two percent gets divvied up throughout the year. I think it's kind of a similar situation.
So basically, what we're talking about, at, at a quarter percent, we're probably talking about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, roughly?
Between two-fifty to three-hundred, depending on the.
And that, that would be up to the community to make a decision, or in other words, triage it to, to what's the most important, what, what, what we should do with that money. Away from us, is that?
Well.
Not, not including us in, in that committee?
I mean, that's kind of our job.
Right.
They would make recommendations to the council.
They're gonna make recommendations and then we go by, okay.
Well, and, and Stacy, on your point of with that last one, just, which is quite evident in our community, in the public, with that last, we bought a senior van. We have the senior lunches. We have a brand-new fire truck. And the library is still open. And. With seniors, libraries, and emergency services.
Yeah, we fixed some road, we did some.
Yeah, they're.
We fixed the giant hole in your neighborhood.
Yeah.
So there, to me, it's quite public, what we've done with that last one. Because as a citizen, if we say that's what, that's what we were gonna do with it, I think that's what we need to do with it, whether.
Yeah, it's just the plus, it shows visibility and transparency.
It, yeah.
And that comes up as a question sound. And if we do it that way, then we have transparency. And that, we need, we need to support those efforts every minute, every time we, we get up.
And we should. And, and a giant fire truck and a big van and Monday filling up with lunch is a great.
So I, could I, could I interject for a second?
Wait, I thought of my question.
Oh, you're not, okay, go ahead.
Does the, our last one that we passed have a sunset?
No.
I don't, I didn't think it did.
I don't believe so. I'd have to go back and look. That was in 2014?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look.
So.
I don't remember.
I, I would, if I could speak for a second, I, I know all the proponents over here have had a shot and everybody knows that I am actually adamantly against at least a general sales tax. One, currently, it is probably about two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred thousand dollars per year that we're talking, that we're currently collecting. That same sum of money will be another two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred thousand for this following year or whenever we approve this. We do have two potentially large enterprises coming into the city that could easily double that number, which would mean that now we're talking about a half a million to a million dollars. All based upon money that is the full discretion of the council. I consider that a bit of a slush fund. And although I am fully aware that, and I'm fully confident in this council that I sit with, that doesn't mean I will be fully comfortable and, and will that following councils be as accountable? There, you might wanna put a committee in place, but I believe our legal counsel will tell you that there is no binding agreement to whatever that committee would state. Also, if we refer back to this current one that we're doing, we, we do have everything that Sue mentioned. We have the senior lunches, we have the van, we, we have the library, we fixed some roads. However, what, what we forgot to do is a complete follow-up on about a twenty thousand dollar a year funding of the library that was supposed to be sitting there, which I don't know if anybody been able to find that, but it should be a hundred and twenty or a hundred and thirty thousand dollars or whatever that number is now. But it wasn't set aside. It's back in the general fund. It doesn't exist. And so I will put that out there, is that those are the things. And now you're talking about doubling that. And if the businesses that we hope to bring into our community, it would double it again. That's a lot of funding. And if we would wait and if those businesses come to town, the current quarter percent sales tax that we have on the books will more than adequately compensate. Do we have to wait? Yes, we have to wait. So I am very adamantly opposed to a quarter percent sales tax on a general fund basis. And I know it's the easy way to do it, fifty plus one. And I am not for that. We are funding a couple, thinking of funding a couple organizations that need help, I get that. But we could find something else somewhere or rearrange things. In particular, to the cemetery, for eleven years, I have harped that they don't belong on the TOT fund. After a hundred and twenty or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in eleven years, we're still harping about the same damn thing. Sorry. That's not progress. That's whining that I need money and saying, I'll fix it. And then, after you get the money, going back to the same old thing. I would be in support of a special tax. Well, we do advise the voters that it is for special things only. It, it's harder, but it is the right way to do things when you're talking about spending people's money on taxes. Taxes are regressive. Taxes, taxes, although it's been put out that taxes only impact, the travelers, primarily in Weed, impact travelers as they come through. Those taxes impact our local citizens for years. And although that traveler who goes through once hits us with that quarter percent, it impacts every citizen in Weed for however many years they have to pay that. So again, special tax, I am for, because it's specific. And if it goes to the rec department, wonderful, they earned it. If it goes to the cemetery, wonderful, they earned it. If it goes to a fire department, wonderful. It was put out there and it is plain to see why we did it. And it's not discretionary. Not discretionary, sorry, is good. I'm done, thanks.
Mike Tanner, this is Mayor. I would have just a few.
Microphone.
With the cemetery, that's example of, yes, it didn't work, but the citizens put together and got people who used to live here and current people to fix everything. Now, they could have waited, they didn't want to. So that's how the people or the people of Weed have gotten involved. So I encourage, I remember the, the library fund and, and I, I agree with that concern, because it was an earmarked amount we suggested. And what we hear now, there's, the funding is not there. I'm also told, I, my point is with having the, with, with the oversight committee, whichever one we choose, that is so important, because then it's visibility and transparency that we can see. So that's not counting what you're saying, I, I still agree with that. And that might help the accountability. And also, our new staffing and just being just honest, previous leadership, city manager, financial people, we have different people in place. And from what the steps they're doing now, we gotta trust them and hope that they will do the right thing of accountability. And that's where they have it. And, and we, we'll be honest, I know last eight, nine years, I've seen things that weren't handled correctly. But we have new leadership, so I'm encouraged by what I see now. The leadership that we have in place with our, in our finance team, our leadership for the city. And I, it encourages me, based on what, I didn't know what was happening, because I, I grew up here since three years old. And I didn't know some things would happen until I came into city council. And I was like, oh, my gosh, that was being done? Kim and I talked about a few things, just not, no, not heavy items, but we didn't know that. I think there's more visibility now. So I understand the concerns are valid. I think that we have people in place that can help curb some of those ideas. It may not eliminate them, it might curb some of those. That's all I had to add to that.
Just a quick rebuttal. If you're referring to leadership, leadership is here. They carry out the instructions. That is staff. Leadership is here. So if you see the problem here, that's where it starts and that's where it stops. Who we hire is our instrument. That's it.
I have a comment for you. So, so, yes, some things have been taken care of, but it's mostly band-aided. It's not fixed.
When you say things, what do you mean things?
Whatever, you were talking about the cemetery and they got together and they did some things and they fixed the problem. They band-aided their problems. So there's a lot bigger projects that they, even if they ask for money every year, it would take five years to get enough money to even fix one project.
I can respectfully disagree. I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Ms. Mayor? I, a lot of good points made. And I'm getting off the subject a little bit, but one, one of the, I was reading a study about how to get more people involved in the community. And one of the suggestions was to have an amount of money set aside for the public to decide the triage. And I do like that, that part of it, where, where the, where the public, and I know we're gonna be the final decision, but I, I think it's real and, and it doesn't have to be. There could be some money set aside for the public to decide what they wanna do with this money. And because if nothing else, we're getting more ideas than we, than we have. I think that, I agree with Kenon that the, you know, if we were going to, if, if we're going to have it for specific things, it's, it's, it's a, you know, you, we're going two-thirds vote. And two-thirds vote does mean that the community is, is firmly behind it. I have to agree with that. I, but as the, as far as the ongoing cost of that quarter percent to the, to our local people, I think that's, that's fairly insignificant. I think that the one thing we've been working on for, since I've been on for fourteen years is the, the cemetery. the cemetery. I don't know that we're, what we're going to do when, when these people finally retire. I was talking to Sam Mize the other day, and he says, "Oh, we got some young people out there," and he's talking about his, Anthony, who is 10 years younger than him, five or six years older than me, and I'm 73. And I just don't see the, the long-term, and I do remember when that, when the cemetery was very sad. It was despicable. There was nobody taking care of it. So I'm hoping that, I think if nothing else, we have to come up with something for the, for the cemetery. The, I know that the rec department is, needs some help, and I think that's due to the situation with the, you know, the community center definitely has changed the, you know, the, your budget for sure. And maintaining that is a, something that, and there were some certain circumstances in that that didn't work out the way we, you'd planned either. But as far as the, I think, we have to do something with the cemetery. And either or, I, I'm going to go along with the council. But I, I think that the specific, if we want to put it to, to rec department and to the cemetery, I think we should be able to mount a, a, a campaign to, to sell it. And if the community wants to do it, you know, let's have at it. But I do think that it is, the discretionary money could become, like Ken says, I mean, we could be, we're not talking about a quarter million, or we're talking about a million. And that is a lot of money to, just to have not accounted for. It possibly could slip back in. I'm rambling. Thank you.
When you say campaign, is that by vote, voters?
Well, I, the campaign would be to explain to the voters that, you know, my, my idea's, number one, is 85% of that money will be paid by people that move through that year. The 15% will, could be, you know, paid by, you know, the people here, but they're, we're also getting something for that money, too. It's not like it's just, you know, a tax and nobody, and there's not going to be any return on it. That's what I'm thinking.
Well, I'm, I'm for the general tax, the 50% plus one. And I realize that it is people, 85% of it is the people passing through. And for the six times I went back and forth to Arizona, I'm sure that I paid a quarter penny sales tax someplace I was, probably everywhere, whether it was on the gas that we bought, or the chips, or the dinner, or whatever we bought. So I don't have a problem with somebody coming here to pay it, because I'm sure I paid it in their town. And with that oversight committee, that's fine. I, we're an oversight committee. I mean, I think we need to be honest with our people about what it's being. I feel really good about the last tax, that we are being honest about what we're spending that money on. And I think that we could be honest with this. Now, you're right. Who knows who's going to be here after us? Hopefully, everybody in the city votes for honest, upfront people. I don't know. But I would like to make a motion. Are you done? Okay. To ask for the general tax, the 50% plus one.
I would like to amend that motion. If we do, if we do the 50% plus one, that we limit it to a three-year period with a three-year sunset clause. Because if it's designed originally to make up for some deficiencies in some of these departments, three years should be enough to catch up, especially if you're talking three-quarters of a million dollars or better. So anyway, that's my amended motion. I would like to put a sunset clause of three years on the 50% plus one.
I have a question. Can I ask a question within the motion? As a second, I can ask a question, all right?
Yeah.
Again, that sunset piece, from experience and the information you shared, isn't it longer that you've seen that they've been put out? It doesn't matter. We talked about 15 or 20 years that was mentioned. I'm just looking at that time space because three years is, it's not short. It's quick, but it's accountability. I like that. And I'm looking at what's the history of how these usually work. Do you have any information on that?
In my experience, you often see termination dates, 20 years, sometimes 10 years. The thing that most agencies consider is that there is a cost to the agency to put a measure on the ballot. So when, if the idea is that this is potentially a tax that we may want to propose again in a certain amount of time, the shorter the time period, the more likely it is that you're going to be incurring just the cost for the election itself.
That makes sense.
So if it doesn't work, we can amend it or something. Is that what, is that what, is that what?
Yeah. I mean, a lot of, a lot of, I mean, like, I think in Nevada City, they had a 10-year sales tax, and then at year nine, they came back to the voters and said, "Have it again."
So a three-year would, we'd be back in two years.
If you wanted to, if the council at that time wanted to go.
So a 10-year, 10-year would make a little more sense, a sunset. So it could take us, well, it'll be, we'd pay for it within a year.
But I would note that motions and motions to amend require seconds, and we also haven't had public comment yet.
Okay. I, but it brings up another question for me. So can, can we review without sunset? Can we say we'll review it in three years rather than sunsetting in three years?
I don't know if that can be voted upon. I mean, is that language you can put in or to?
You want to put that in the ordinance?
Within the ordinance itself?
Not really, but if it's three, I mean, I don't want a sunset, but.
Like David's experience, my, my, I've had a couple cities that I've managed where, like he just said, where it was getting ready to sunset, and typically, the year prior to, it is reviewed and decided upon whether to bring it back to a vote of the people.
But was that sunset 10 years from now, or 20, or what?
The one I was involved with, I think there's two of them, it was 20 years.
Okay.
Well, we do have a motion on the floor, so if there's any more questions, I just asked that about the sunset year. That's the only point I'm part to, in part of your motion.
But you also need to allow public comment now.
Okay. So first, we have a motion for the general tax. Do we have a second on the general tax?
Or public comment?
Do I do public comment or second?
I think we should have public comment before we take action, but if you want to wait for the second.
Well, the, can we, that's a, that's a whole different motion, right?
I think you're saying that they made a motion, or who made the motion?
She made a motion. We need a second. We need public comment. Then we need an amendment and a second. And, right, okay. So we got a motion for a-
Were you seconding it with the amended?
No, he can't. That's a whole different motion.
I can, I can't.
Yet, yet. So there's a motion for a general tax, which is the 50 plus one. So we need a second if we're going to move forward, and then we do public comment. And then, if he wants to amend, he can make a motion to amend, and then that will need a second.
And we can negotiate that amendment, possibly?
You would amend his amendment?
You can make another motion to amend, or if it dies for lack of a second, you can amend the motion as it was.
Okay, I could amend. Let's say if I said about seven years.
Am I correct on that? Right. We, right. But we don't call the vote yet on the first motion until we've determined if the second, if the amendment is.
Right, right. We're not voting. We just, right now, I'm asking if we have a second for the general tax motion.
I want amendment.
Without the amendment. All right. It sounds like we do not have a second.
Unless you want to do it.
Uh, well, I would love to.
You can.
I can. All right. But it won't pass.
And call for a rule?
Well.
Yeah, we'll call for, we're going to do public comment. Okay, so do we have any public comment?
So are you seconding?
Sure. Yes, I am seconding it.
Okay. And are we going to ask, are you going to ask for a second for Councilmember?
Do you want, do you want public comment first, or do you want his amendment now?
It's the same as before, as long as, we can't take, we have to take action.
We can't vote.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'd actually take action on the last motion made first.
So I want to say that I want to amend that motion with, to a general tax with a sunclap, set clause of three years. Or can I make an entirely different motion?
Do you want to withdraw your motion to amend?
If.
We are just confusing ourselves more.
Can I make a motion to amend that motion to a special tax?
If, are you withdrawing your, if you wanted to do that, you could, but you just withdraw your motion to amend, and you would make a substitute motion for a special tax?
Are we all confused now?
No, I'm not confused. I'm just debating whether I, what I want to do here, to myself. There's a, there's a conversation going on between my two ears. It's not a very long one.
Yeah, because the last mo, you have to act on the last motion first.
Okay.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion to amend the general, general tax with a three-year sunset clause. I'll stick with that.
Then you'd need to ask for a second.
All right. Do I have a second on that motion?
I, I'll second it with a.
You're going to second it with a three-year?
No, I'm, I'm going to propose another.
A friendly amendment to his?
A friendly amendment to, to, I would, I would agree with it with a seven-year sunset.
Why wouldn't you do 10?
It's too much money.
I'm being fair.
Come on.
We should just address it.
So the question to, to Councilmember Palfini is if that, if he accepts that friendly amendment or not.
Yes.
This is bargaining. Five?
Either accept it or withdraw it.
Six.
Are you really, I can name that tune in.
I'll go six.
Six years, okay.
So you're, so the motion to amend is with a six-year sunset, and it's seconded by Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
On a general tax.
Correct.
All right. Now, I can call for public comment.
Because you don't dare.
If you guys followed that bouncing ball, guys, because we're not.
All right. Do you, do you want to read it back to us?
No.
No?
I wish you that.
I have a friendly amendment to the amendment of three years with the friendly amendment to six years.
All right. Take a vote.
So there's no public comment? So the.
I, I asked. There was public comment.
So the vote is on whether or not to add a six-year sunset. That's all that you guys are voting on at this point.
General.
So my motion doesn't mean anything now?
We're going to go back.
Okay, I got it.
Well, we have to vote on this. Okay.
I mean, if your motion, well, no, if this, okay, no, actually, that's wrong. So if this motion passes, the, no, yes, it's a, it's a general, then I'm going to move forward with help preparing a general tax with a six-year sunset. Because that motion, the amend, it's an amendment. It's not a substitute motion. It's not a new motion. It's just part of essentially that motion.
Mine.
If, if this motion fails, then we go to your motion, and it's just general tax with no termination clause.
But it is general tax with the amendment.
So they're both general tax.
They're both general.
And if they both fail, I can make a motion for a special tax.
Oh, no. You.
Yes, I can.
Yes, you can.
Because it's America, but.
It's the right thing. It's the hard thing, but it's the right thing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
This is for, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure you guys understand. This is, if this passes with three votes, we're going to bring back a general tax with a six-year sunset.
Right. And we can vote yea or nay.
And then at the next, and then we might come back next.
So if these two are the only ones that say yes?
And they're saying yes.
Then it's not?
Well, we're not done yet.
Should we take a roll call vote on this? Because this is confusing. So let's take a roll call on the amendment for the six years.
Okay. So if only the two of them say yes to it, then it comes back to me of having no sunset?
Correct.
And I vote.
Okay.
And I, and then, yeah. So just remember, we're not voting on the tax yet. Like, I'm going to, we're going to come back with the ordinance.
We're voting on what the ordinance is going to say.
The council to approve it. So this is just the direction so that we know what you guys want to see when we come back.
Point of clarification. I thought we're, the way, the first moment, because I, the way you continued to be read again, because I understood that it was a general tax, and then the years came into place for the sunset. That's what I thought the whole sentence was.
Yes.
Both of them, both ways can require, can have a sunset. So if we do a special tax, it can have a sunset. If we do a general tax, it can have a sunset.
Right, but the motion was on the general tax.
Yes.
Right.
And you said it was, it was not, you didn't say that was that, but it was a general tax, right?
Yeah, it's a general tax with a sunset. Mine is a general tax with no sunset.
I understand that. The first time he said it, he didn't say a general tax. I'm just saying what it's heard. So.
Roll call?
A roll call on the current.
So I have a motion with the, motion for the general tax with a six-year sunset. I have Councilmember Palfini motioning, and I have Councilmember Hall seconding, correct? Councilmember Green?
No.
Councilmember Green? Mayor Green. But yours is Councilmember when it pops up here. Yeah.
No.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Palfini?
Yes.
Councilmember Tabalero?
No.
All right. Motion fails. All right.
So now you go to the next motion, which is.
Now we go to the next motion, which was the original motion.
Of no sunset.
General tax, 50 plus one vote, no sunset. And we, and I seconded it.
Yes.
Let's do a roll call.
Councilmember Green?
No.
Councilman, or Mayor Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
No.
Councilmember Palfini?
No.
Councilmember Tabalero?
Yes.
Okay. So that, that also failed.
Correct.
All right. So now we can make a brand-new motion.
I like, I would like to make a motion for a special tax with no sunset.
Does anybody second that motion?
I don't, I don't, I'm having a hard time now. We, doesn't this seem to be countering what we just?
No, he's wanting a special tax, which is the two-thirds vote.
Two-thirds vote and a committee to make sure of how it's spent.
We can have a committee on the other.
The committee was on both.
Right now, we have no.
But it's a non-binding committee. It's different.
We haven't made any move yet.
Right. No moves.
This, this is a new.
There's nothing happening.
Can I ask Stacy a question? What do you want? Well, if you don't, do you want the special tax?
Well, if you're going to ask me, you need to ask every person that's saying question on this panel here. He's going to ask that.
But they already said, Kim and I said yes to one. They said yes to another, and you said no to both of them.
Right, because I want, I like the accountability in the years, so the years is my concern. I don't want it too far out or too soon.
Okay. So you, so, but do you want a special tax where two-thirds of the people have to?
I believe so, because accountability, yes.
So we can still have, we can still do the 50 plus one and have a sunset and have a committee.
Um, I want, I'm not sure I'm singled out, but I want more community vote in it. So I like the two-thirds. So the community has a good say in it.
Okay.
And I won't change that. Because I think they need to, they've said, I've seen accountability not there when you have accountability. It should be happening, so I'm, I'm going to stay, I'm going to stick with that. But thank you if that clarifies.
Yeah, no, that does, that does. It's, it's harder to get. I don't, I don't agree with it, but we can agree to not agree.
We can't disagree. And still be friends.
Yeah. Well.
Okay. So do we, did we get a second? No, we did not. Okay.
I would like a motion to, for a special tax with a 10-year sunset.
I'll second that.
All right. Public comment?
Their heads are exploding.
Yeah. Roll call vote?
Let's clarify again what we're voting on, please, one more time.
I have a motion for a special tax with a 10-year sunset, and I have a motion from Councilmember Palfini and a second from Councilmember Green.
Stacy Green.
Stacy Green. Yes, sir.
Can I do a second one?
Sure you can.
Yes, you can make, there's motions to amend or substitute motions.
Amend. A general tax with a 10-year sunset and a committee.
That would be a substitute motion, just.
I don't care what you call it.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Say, now restate your motion again so I understand it clearly.
A general? A general tax, so that's fifty percent plus one.
Okay, with the committee?
With a committee and a ten-year sunset.
And the committee doesn't have to be followed, by the way.
Right.
But that's on either one.
It's a recommendation, just like the plan.
An advisory, advisory committee.
But that's on both.
No, it is not. No, it is not on a special tax. It has specified items that you can spend the money on, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, that's correct, so the special tax in the ordinance itself lists the special purposes for the tax. The, the committee still only makes recommendations to the council and the council decides how to spend the money within the parameters of those special, uh, purposes that are listed in the ordinance.
And a general tax, then, could be, uh, that committee saying, well, you didn't say anything about, um, a playground, so, but we think, we think the city needs a new playground. So you could do it with that, because it wasn't specified for certain things, right? And I'm just using a playground as an example.
Correct.
With a general tax, that committee could come up with something that we might not have thought of.
Correct.
But if it's a special tax, they can only stay within those perimeters.
Correct.
Mm, that'd be awful.
Do we need a second on your motion too, right now, right?
Yes.
For a general?
Yes.
Fifty percent plus one and a committee?
Committee.
And a ten-year sunset.
I just have, oh, well, I have a que- question before I second it, um, what is it? I just forgot the question, no. So we can say specific areas and items in the general tax, we can label?
No, not in the language, um, the ordinance.
Okay, so it's still, it's still just a, like a, not, I hope that word's slash fun, but, it's just a fun.
Yeah, there, well, there's, you can't, you can, you can talk about budget priorities, but, for now, but there's nothing that will be legally binding on any future council.
Okay, my question's answered, and I'm not seconding it.
So, so right now, the tax that we have is a general tax, and it was agreed upon, when that tax was passed, that the money would go to specific things in our community, and that's where it's going.
Yep.
And it was a, and it was a general tax.
There are some areas that we did not have accountability.
The library was an accountability, that was missed.
It's still, it, the library is open more than it ever was, so.
The library is open. The library is open.
Well, the facts are, it was in the, in the, the measure that we put, but as Kim Palfini, Councilmember Palfini mentioned, it wasn't a tiered for, and that's visibility, so you can say whatever you want, but that's the truth.
It wasn't what for?
It wasn't, it wasn't used for that purpose.
We, we didn't use all of it, because in our budget process, we allocated X amount of dollars for the operation of, of the library, and we allocated X amount of dollars for the purchase of the building. None of, now, we did, now, the operations we did handle, the allocations to the building is out in the air somewhere. Which was not followed.
If you, if council would like, I can read the language from the current sales tax.
That would help.
The quarter penny, says, "These funds may be used for any general governmental purpose, provided, however, that the council is expected to give some consideration to using the funds for library expenses and for senior services, along with police and fire protection and roadway maintenance." So there's nothing binding in that language on the council, it still is general governmental purposes, it just requires that the council consider these items.
And so far, to my knowledge, the money that we have gotten from that original one has been used for those things that are listed. Now, if it was used for more than that, I don't know.
Is that your point?
Part of the fact is, is that quarter percent sales tax, if some of the businesses that are come, supposedly coming in, if the court decisions work our way, and that will double that quarter percent sales tax, and it will become discretionary. Hence, my first diatribe about. It's gonna increase regardless, so council has discretion on where that money would go anyway, without passing an additional sales tax.
So what's the point of that?
And the rebuttal of that is that they may come, we don't know when, cause they were supposed to be here already.
Are you, are you saying that we aren't accountable?
And I agree with that.
And we need the money now, and the ten-year sunset would allow us that if those businesses do come, and we are getting more taxes from them, and it is enough to support the things that we want to support, then we can sunset this tax and move on to just our original sales tax. And then lower our sales tax back to seven point five.
This becomes a very hard conversation, because we do have specific interests in a couple of the items on that special sales tax, I have to point that out, so. This is not a argument of equitable stakes. My equitable stakes is, is that it is dispersed in an even and proper manner. That may or may not be the stakes that everybody on this council exhibits or wants, because we have different interests. I have no bearing in any of those that are on that special fund. And so, I, I, I mean, I, I, and I do like the fact that if we're going to do a tax, what are those items that we're gonna spend the money on? And if it's to the rec department, wonderful, the voters voted on it, take it. If the cemetery's in that, fine, take it. We get that off of T O T and the rest of the things that we, that we debate every year, so.
And my response is, I totally agree, we need to be accountable, I don't see that a hundred percent, and I'm gonna keep saying that when I see things, A possibly is not equal C, it's not.
And if the special tax works and if the ten-year sunset works, you can have another special tax. I mean, if the public sees that something works, I don't know why the public wouldn't vote for it twice.
Well, the last one was a fifty percent plus one, the one that works, and it, the one that we have was, was general, right? Fifty percent plus one.
Yes.
Yes.
So, so that argument could be used for either of the regular, or the special or general.
And right now, we haven't given staff any direction at all regarding the, uh, the.
Sales tax.
Sales tax.
There is a substitute motion on the table that has not yet had a second.
I will second it.
Okay.
The last one I put on there was, oh, no, you did.
Yeah.
So we need to vote on?
The second one.
The second one.
The substitute.
The general.
General with ten.
With ten and a citizen.
And it's, and a committee, and a citizen committee.
But, but no sunset, is that right?
No, it was a ten-year sunset, it was a ten-year sunset, so that if all these businesses that are coming, um, and we're making a million dollars, then we can in, in ten years say we're done.
Or a new city council can make a decision.
They can.
New members.
And hopefully, they do the right thing with the money.
Be accountable and visibility.
Right.
General tax doesn't improve accountability.
So can you restate that motion, so we can probably vote on that, so we're not where we are now?
I have a substitute motion to amend to a general tax with a ten-year sunset and, um, the accountability committee. First, I have a motion by Tavallaro and a second by Mayor Green.
So roll call.
Councilmember Stacy Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bob Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Ken Palfini?
Absolutely not.
Councilmember Susan Tavallaro?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion carries, and because it was a substitute motion, it, it renders the, the prior motion moot.
Okay, do we still need public comment?
It's already passed.
It's already passed the motion.
They don't want to talk about it, they want us to stop, they want us to talk.
My point is that I, I want something done. I mean, we have to do something, so.
And the public still has a voice.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, moving on.
As an ordinance for introduction.
Can you say that louder, something we were talking?
This will come back as an ordinance for introduction.
Oh, right, next one.
And after that, if it's passed, then it'll go to the voters in November.
Correct.
Okay.
Got a question on that also.
Oh.
If, when it comes, when it comes back to us, are, are all of us gonna be able to vote on that? Do we have?
Yes, it's a general tax.
You have to have four fifths, four fifths in order for it to.
Four fifths.
Yes, we'll, we'll need four of the five councilmembers to vote yes on the ordinance itself in order for it to go to the voters, but the voters would be able to approve it with a majority.
And even if they say no, we still can't push it through, we're gonna have to come back again to readdress it.
That's correct.
That's correct.
So the voters have the voice.
The voters have the final.
Okay, application for A B C license by resolution?
Where was that?
Justin?
I was just waiting, so, per A B C, our census tract allows for twelve, uh, type twenty or twenty-one off-sale licenses, anything beyond that requires waiver. Currently, we are at fourteen, uh, we have a application and a request for waiver for Vendamax, which is a convenience store that's going to open on Southweed Boulevard. Uh, part of the waiver process is a convenience and necessity study requirement, um, for the council to determine that there is a convenience or necessity for the public to have a, uh, to, first to exceed the, uh, the allotted twelve, and then also to take into account how many are in the general area already. Currently, within seven hundred feet, there are five type twenty or twenty-ones, uh, if you extend that out beyond a thousand feet, it becomes, uh, six current, uh, twenty or twenty-one type licenses, they're requesting a waiver, go ahead.
How many are within a mile?
Um, I don't have that number, I have the list, I mean, we could go over that.
Would there be ten?
Within a mile, yes, I, I would say there's ten, uh, well.
No.
Almost a mile would put you at Southweed, so that would, that may include, I mean, I'm, I don't have that exact number, but that definitely would put you close to the Southweed area, which is gonna include, um, currently three more, excuse me, four more out there, so.
And possibly more.
Yes.
And Mountain Market and ninety-seven Mini Mart and Rays.
So Rays, Rays would be within a thousand feet, you have Mountain Market, you have ninety-seven Mini Mart, if you would pull, if you pulled into Southweed, you have four at Southweed with, uh, two, uh, approved, council-approved projects at Southweed, which will require two more waivers when that, uh, if and when that becomes time, but those projects were already approved, not the licenses, but the projects.
And is it within a thousand feet of daycare, school?
No, no, we're just talking about how, the, how saturated the neighborhood is with those licenses.
Each other.
This isn't taking into account type forty or forty-one licenses, which are restaurant licenses, um, it's not taking into account, uh, on-sale licenses such as a bar, this is just convenience and liquor store and grocery store licenses.
All right. Somebody like to make a motion?
Do we have public comment? Cause we have the owners of the.
Does Chevron sell, uh, alcohol?
Yes, so within, within the, uh, seven hundred feet, you have a spirit, Chevron, Valero, Layton's Liquors, which also includes, that's a type twenty-one, which is a distilled spirits, um, and you have Dollar General, which is a type twenty alcohol and wine.
And Ellie's and Heilo?
Those are type forty, forty, forty-ones, which are restaurants, yes.
Well, because they're restaurants, got it, got it, got it, yeah.
The, the applicants here too, if you'd like to address them.
Okay. Public comment? If, if you'd like to speak, come to the, uh, podium and state your name and address, please.
Name is Eric, and my address is one-one-eight Southweed Boulevard, where we're, uh, opening the convenience store, Mexican tienda type of thing, and seeing what the city thinks.
We want, nice.
In a Mexican what?
Uh, Mexican items, like a Mexican tienda, like a Mexican grocery store.
Okay, okay, so not a restaurant, but.
No, 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 just like, uh, dry foods and stuff like that.
I would appreciate you sharing the interaction you had with our city officials and what has changed based on what you came in, that's good to know, because we sometimes don't know the A through Z, and by you doing that, make some changes, I think that's good for the public to know, I, I would think you, you would be good to share that, I visited your store and I appreciate what you shared.
Yeah, when we, uh, when we freshly opened and, um, had our merchandise, merchandise in there, since we had like, uh, convenience store, uh, point of view for the store, we, uh, brought, uh, you know, like, the dry foods, uh, sodas and other gifts and stuff, and we started, and we brought some, um, pipes and other smoking stuff, like, uh, you know, like, uh, leaves and stuff to roll, other type of smoking. We were not aware that we needed that type of, um, permit or license, so we brought it in, now we are aware, uh, our chief let us know, and, um, we removed all those items, knowing that it would, uh, interact and, um, probably disturb the approval of our A B C license, so we got rid of all those items, removed all that, and we would like to proceed just with the A B C license.
Thank you for that, visibility and, and realness, we need, we need, we need that from business coming, I appreciate that, I do.
Anybody else have any questions for him? Anybody in the audience have any public comment? Okay. Entertained motion?
I have a question, Ms. Mayor, so it says here, uh, consider a convenience or necessity waiver, which one are we doing?
Is, is that one whole thing, or is there two different kinds of waivers?
So each city handles this differently, some, there are cities that have the police department, I prefer to come from the planning department, because I'm not one to say there is a necessity or a convenience, um, typically, we look at crime statistics and we don't, it's, who am I to say, what, I don't have to say that a person in that neighborhood needs another store that provides that service. It's ultimately up to you, it's your city, uh, you get to determine.
So we don't have to specify a waiver of convenience?
No, no, this is just, this is just a form, and that's what it says at the top.
Yeah.
And that's.
Does that help?
It does, we don't have to have the waiver.
That's just the language in the statute, public convenience or necessity.
Are you, do you have plans to be a bus stop?
No, no, we had a, we had a, uh, like a sign, sign outside that had the bus stops, because, uh, our sister company, which is Dos Amigos, that's where the bus stops, that's where it's at, and, um, we were gonna pop, probably just sell the tickets if it was okay, if it's not a problem, but that's it, not the bus stop, we're just gonna sell like the tickets.
You just want to show the schedule?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the signs out there, they're saying bus stop, have they been removed?
It's removed, it's not there no more.
Okay, thank you for that answer, awesome, sorry.
And point of clarification, with the A B C license, that will also limit how much they can advertise on the windows, there's, they're only allowed so much, uh, coverage of the windows with an alcohol license.
And is that Greyhound bus tickets?
It's, uh, it's, no, 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 not Greyhound, it's a different company, it's a.
Del Norte.
Yeah, Del Norte, it's a Hispanic-oriented company that brings the farm workers from down south, up north.
Okay.
I'm back.
So just to react, make sure I heard, I'm sure I heard it correctly, but everything that has been proposed, has been clarified and cleaned up or fixed or whatever words you want to use?
Yeah, it was removed, removed and readjusted.
So, for the, for the gallery who may not be aware, so there was an, a, a citation that was issued, which temporarily suspended the, the business license currently per municipal code because of the violation, once they rectified it and, uh, they withdrew the application for the paraphernalia permit, which, as it conflicted with the A B C license, you cannot have an A B C license and sell paraphernalia in the state of California. They retracted their paraphernalia permit request, and they're currently acting as just the grocery store or convenience store, whatever you want to call it, um, without an alcohol license.
Good.
Ms. Mayor? I make a motion, did we, uh, uh, apply a waiver for a type twenty off-sale beer and wine license located at one-one-eight Southweed Boulevard?
All right, do I have a second?
I think, I think we need to state that it's resolution number fourteen dash two zero two-two.
Is that right?
It is not a waiver, I just asked that.
Yes, it is a resolution, you are correct.
Staff is asking for action by resolution, and they put it opposed.
Action by resolution, yes.
That, that'd be a waiver?
And.
I just asked that and we said no.
So the resolution is attached to the waiver form when they submit it to ABC.
Okay. I just asked, was it a different kind of waiver and we said no, and just go with what we just said.
All right.
Right?
So, so you are, Bob, you are making a motion to approve resolution number, I don't know. I just had it too.
14.
14 dash 2022.
So stated, yes.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody against?
I am, I'm a no.
All right, motion, 4 to 1, motion carried. Thank you.
Welcome to the city.
Yeah. And.
Be successful and safe.
Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you. All right, fire by motion, Chief Duncan?
Okay, this is for the purchase of, well, in the consent agenda, he gave me permission to sell.
Oh, microphone.
In the consent agenda, he gave me consent to sell two old fire trucks, older fire trucks. And this is to use that money that we get from the sale of those two trucks and purchase a type 3 4 wheel drive, it's a used vehicle, to replace those two vehicles. That's what we're asking for.
I make a motion to approve.
We have to have public comment?
Oh, Chief Duncan?
Is there any public comment about a new fire truck?
If nothing else, I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion carried. Administration by resolution, council will consider requesting a public hearing for the consideration of reorganization of the Weed High School and Weed Elementary School districts.
Madam Mayor, Council, before you tonight is the exact same resolution that was before you, I believe last summer, when the request was made and discussed. The, a group has expressed interest and came before the council. At last month's meeting, there was a great deal of discussion and it was decided upon to bring the resolution before this body tonight and for further discussion and consideration of requesting a public hearing of the county committee for the reorganization of the school district. So that's where we are tonight.
Okay, we have some public comment policies, rules to apply, correct? Three minutes?
Yes.
And three minutes for each, pro or con, doesn't matter. And we would really appreciate it if we're not repeating what somebody else has already.
And, and it should be noted that if you sent emails, they were received by this body and disseminated to the council, I mean, received by our city clerk and disseminated to the council. So they have your emails, we received several of them, I don't know what the final count was, but several dozen.
Yes, and we, and we just got an update before this meeting started.
Yes, so if you sent some, like in the last hour or two, we got those as well, so.
Yes, thank you. Okay, public comment is open.
Hi, good evening, thank you guys.
Name and address.
Pardon me?
Name and address, please.
My address is 512 Glenmar Drive in Mount Shasta, but I'm also the principal superintendent of Butteville Elementary School in Edgewood.
Okay, what's your name?
My name is Eric Bragg. Nice to meet you guys. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm just gonna make this very quick. We represent part of the 50% of the students that attend Weed High School, we're a feeder school, we're the only other feeder school, official feeder school for Weed High School, Weed Elementary being the other one. In reading your resolution, there's some words that caught my attention that make me concerned, and that is that it says that the Siskiyou Union High School District and Weed Union Elementary School District, whereby Weed High School and the territory it serves becomes part of the Weed Union Elementary School District. Well, our constituents are from Edgewood and from Lake Chastina primarily, we do have a few students from Weed. We're not, we, we have no concern to be a part of this, just saying it bluntly. This unification could affect us by possibly taking our autonomy, canceling our school board, getting rid of our local decision making, funding and students. We could be absorbed into this situation. So in the interest of transparency and sharing information process, I would like to respectfully request that our constituents be included in any and all discussions regarding the unification of Weed High School and Weed Elementary. That being said, we're not against the feasibility, feasibility study, but I don't think right now is the time. We just got out of a pandemic, we're refocusing on our students, and this is just a very disruptive process that's going on. We're also questioning the timing and motives for this process. What we request is that you go back to the legal petition that you have requested in, in prior meetings and let that petition include our constituents, our community of Edgewood and Lake Chastina. Our school's been around for 150 plus years and our structure's been working and stable and solvent over that time. And we do not want to come, become part of this instability that has been surrounding this Weed unification. So it's important to note, to note that please don't bypass the, our community, we want involvement. And then the other, the last thing I want to say is that our students go to Weed High School for the most part. And I feel like if there's a unification process that goes on, that the funding is going to be, you know, unstable for the next few years, possibly even longer. And that means programs and educational, you know, opportunities for our graduates are going to be diminished, diluted, or possibly deleted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
I sent you a letter, so I hope you all read it. Rebecca Slus, 7831 Sugar Pine Road. I'm in Weed's sphere of influence, you've heard from me before a lot about Sugar Pine. So, but hello again, and it's good to see all of you and hi, I didn't know you were here too. So, before my time starts, I guess, oh, the bathrooms, there's no bathrooms? It's kind of a concern.
If there's an emergency, we can get you.
Okay, thank you, I just, we were out there and that's pretty important for a public meeting.
We can get you.
Okay, well, I think now that we're to this issue, I was just worried before when we were going back and forth with all the other stuff.
We just want to play a little extra pressure.
I think so. Okay, so I sent the letter and so hopefully you guys read it. I student taught at Weed High School, I mean, at Weed Elementary, before I decided I wanted to get my single subject, so I have a connection there. Most of people have retired that were there, but it's a sweet school and I don't have anything against Weed Elementary, I love the students. I love my students at the high school, both from, you know, wherever they come from. And so I'm coming at this as looking for the opportunities that they have. My son's at the high school now and he's a sophomore and I'm really excited that we're going to have hands on art. One of the teachers at Mount Shasta is coming over this next year, so we have a lot of benefit of kids moving back and forth between the schools, between Mount Shasta and Weed. And I don't think that a lot of people know that, but we are bringing kids over almost every day for choir and people went over for drama and jazz before and kids come over to our school for choir with Mr. Eastman because he's amazing and I know he has someone picked out for next year too, so I'm hoping they'll be just as amazing. But there's a lot of, hm? He's retiring, I know, super sad. Yeah, but he does, I, I heard he has someone that he likes, that he's putting forward. So there's just a lot of movement. Kids next year will be coming to Weed from Mount Shasta for culinary, maybe from McLeod as well, I don't know. So I just worry that if this unification happens, that the kids won't have those same opportunities, so it really kind of makes our school bigger that way to have multiple campuses, you know, available for classes. So that's a, a big important thing. The other thing is I don't know what the rush is for the unification study. It costs a lot of money, it's going to cost money for the elementary school, the high school, the district and the county to gather everything and get that all together. And, and I think let's just really take some time, we haven't really even talked to the elementary school about it. I know there was one joint board meeting, but not at the school level, so I, I think that's really important. And a lot of the things that were of issue between the school, elementary and the high school, I think we're doing or we can do a lot more of, but next week we are meeting together to matriculate, not to matriculate, but to talk about scope and sequence with the teachers. And I look forward to getting back, bringing my kids back to the elementary school like we used to do before COVID. Like Bragg said, we just got out of the pandemic, we're just getting our feet under us and this is really stressful, so thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thanks, Rebecca.
Okay. Oh, do, do you, do you have an update?
So when I went to city manager school, they said this would happen. We got a bathroom fix, so it's the one closest to the door.
She's already out there.
Oh, she already, okay. It is, it is, it is working.
We could use her.
We can fix that with our new tax money if it passes.
Yes. They're disgusting. Okay, name and address.
Megan Hoag, 321 Terrace Street in Weed. So, good evening, I don't feel the need to reiterate anything I put in my email, but what I'd like to talk about right now is the service to the community of Weed. My family, as most of you know, has a very long history in this town, going back over 100 years. My grandmother was then born in a house on Liberty Avenue in 1928, and ever since then, my family has been pillars of this community. My father, Patrick Hoag, was a police officer for the city of Weed until he was wounded in the line of duty. My grandfather was fire chief of this town for many, many years. My other grandfather was an instructor at COS for 30 years. My brother's in the Navy, my mother is a nurse, and I am a teacher for the Siskiyou Union High School District. Literally everything my family has done for over 100 years has been in service to the town of Weed. So as a citizen of this town, I ask that you do your due diligence in this, in your service to the community on this matter. At this time, it doesn't matter where you stand on the unification topic, even though it's not in the best interest of our students, but what does matter is that there is a proper protocol and process that Weed Elementary School and its stakeholders are supposed to follow in order to initiate the investigation process through the Siskiyou County Office of Education, and they are choosing not to follow that. Instead, they're coming to you to skip a few steps. Many of the residents of the city of Weed have absolutely no idea this is going on, nor do they understand what it's about, and they have not been given full disclosure on both the pros and the cons of the unification in order to make a clear decision on whether or not this is something that they would even want. And that's all because the elementary school's not going through the proper, proper protocols of initiating this investigation, but are wanting you to do it so they don't have to. And that's wrong. I'd like to point out that many of the people have been pushing for this unification are either Lake Chastina or Hammond Ranch residents who actually don't get to vote for many City of Weed items. Their property taxes usually are not impacted and would be paying for this new district, and they also send their students to Butteville Elementary, so they don't really have much to lose if this were to not work out very well. It's not in the best interest of Weed students. Also, last year when this came before the council, you asked the schools to get together and speak to one another. I am the CTA union president for the Siskiyou Union High School District, not a single entity from Weed Elementary School has reached out to myself or any other teacher in an official capacity to talk about this unification process and to go over the pros and cons. That's why I, as a citizen of Weed, am urging you to vote no on initiating the investigation from the Siskiyou County Office of Education and make Weed Elementary School and its stakeholders do their due diligence in their service to this community and follow the proper protocols. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Okay, next. Are we done? That's all the public comment?
My name's Kevin Charter, 335 Columbine Road. I'll just clarify a couple of things. This started a year ago, so there has been no rush. We were told a year ago, why are we rushing? There has been no rush. We're simply asking for a feasibility study to be completed. We reiterated, this is the fourth time here, it has nothing to do with Butteville. It is a feasibility study to determine if it's an appropriate thing to do. There's been a lot of information put out into the community, as you're hearing here, that is not true, or is the fact that the, the claims that they're making are supposed to come out during the feasibility study. Those are the questions, good questions have been asked here already. That is the purpose of the study, to get those questions answered. We don't know what we don't know at this point in time. And, and that's a, a very confusing thing for many to somehow understand. And yes, the, the boards got together, the school boards had a public meeting where everybody was invited. The community, the staff, the teachers, everybody was invited, it was an open session here in Weed, both schools came. Weed Elementary School has already passed a resolution supporting this. So we, we're hearing things that over and over and over again. And my only ask to you is to make a decision. People are prepared to go the, the other direction to make sure the feasibility study gets done. This is an opportunity for Weed, the city council, to either support the parents that want this feasibility study done or not. You just need to make a decision to do that and have the courage to do that, so we're not doing this over and over again for the course of a year. Either way is perfectly fine. We'll find other ways for the people that are interested in to do that. We've asked you, because it is a highly complicated process, many of us have contacted the county numerous times, even finding a district map of the school has been challenging from the county, the planning division, the school district doesn't provide it, we actually had to go to a real estate organization to actually find a school map. The process is about 12 chapters long, each chapter is about 50 to 60 pages, which we are reading through, multiple contacts with the county, multiple sources of information that have not been accurate. And so if any of this process you think we're doing has been easy, you are sorely mistaken. Nothing has been easy. You know, and ask for us as community members, for our elected officials, you would think for a complicated process, we would ask you that maybe you would help us make a complicated process simpler to make. If you choose not to do that, that's perfectly fine, we'll move on and do it our own way. But we would encourage and ask you to do this, to find out if it's feasible, if it is in the best interest of the students. And I've said over and over and over again, if the study comes back and says how it's currently structured is the best thing for the students, so be it. That is wonderful, we'll leave it just the way it is. But without the study, we can't get those questions answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Anybody else?
We gotta stop meeting like this. Mike Matheson, current superintendent, Siskiyou Union High School District, live at 17133 Casper Road, Chastina, Weed, California. Not only am I superintendent, but I am the proud father of two Weed High School graduates, one that just finished his last class today at Sonoma State. I wouldn't have traded their experience at Weed High School and within this community for any other that you can imagine. It was a special experience for them. Yes, Mr. Charter is correct that a year ago, or almost a year ago, this started. I remember that date well because about this time, I was probably announcing the graduating class of 2021 on the football field for the first time in a couple of years. And got home and found out that a handful of individuals were here to start communicating to you about this process. The next day, I had to call John Ray and I had to call Debbie Golds to ask them what exactly was going on, because they hadn't the courtesy to come to us and say anything about what they were starting while we were graduating our students at that special event. They've used this veil of let Weed's residents make decisions for Weed. What's veiled behind that are motives that are so different than that. You have a district that has made decisions recently that put their district at financial risk. risk. You can look at their website to see all of the board agenda items that outline that. As superintendent of the Siskiyou Union High School District, I have always had a positive budget, and as a district, we have worked incredibly hard to pass two different bond measures and seek grants and appropriate methods of addressing the facility needs and the needs of our students across the district. Simple look at Weed High School and you can see the results of that work. We have a brand-new construction facility. All of our, um, CTE labs are, uh, up to date with state-of-the-art equipment. We did a new HVAC system. So it goes on and on. About $4 million plus, um, money recently put into Weed High School. And we're about to put another several million in. We have a kitchen project about to start. We're about to renovate every classroom, not only at Weed High School, but at Siskiyou Union High School District. So this is, um, the second part of that is that you have a group of parents that were upset at me and our board for the decisions that they made through COVID. And they have a vendetta to settle, and they're asking you to be a part of settling that. And I beg you, don't do their dirty work for them. They have had a year to go get a petition signed. It's not that complicated. 10% of the voters of the attendance area is less than 300. Make them go get that done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask Mike some questions?
Yes. Mike?
Could I be quick? Who's getting a kitchen?
Weed High School.
For culinary?
It's gonna be a culinary pathway.
Cool.
We're gonna renovate the annex into a cafeteria slash eating area, and they're gonna do all of the food service for Weed High School and the district.
The annex with math?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Nice. Thanks, I'm done. That's it.
All right.
Mike, thanks for coming back. Good to see you again.
I thought you had questions.
Oh, no.
Yes.
Okay. You're welcome. Thank you.
Good to be here. I, I, I wanna do, ask some questions and make sure I have my facts straight when I'm gonna look at this. And first of all, I wanna say that, you know, there's a lot of, uh, it seems as if, when I've, I've since, or picked up on lately, is that a lot of people are, uh, or some people are, if you ask questions, or, uh, some people feel threatened or even offended by asking a question. And I, and I've, my point has been that what I wanna do is, I want to enhance the, uh, the community talking about education. So I just wanna, you know, make some things, get some things straight. Roughly in our district, your district, you have 500, 520 students, 190 from Weed. Is that right?
Correct, yes, sir.
255 from Mount Shasta?
260.
260, good. Uh, Happy Camp 56?
Correct.
And McCloud?
That was my report last night.
McCloud 18?
Correct.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's in the district. Now, yeah, as we try to, you know, trying to get a handle, like, what is your, the budget for just your, your entity for the, uh, uh, the district? For, I, I know that you're, you're, uh, I don't wanna get into specifics, but I, I do know that the, uh, only thing I could find today is your salary. But for the total, what, what would be the total for your, uh, your group?
The entire district or Weed?
In, for the district to run the office, to run, run their office.
Oh.
But the, this year is extraordinary because of the additional COVID dollars, but we have, um, roughly an $8 million district-wide budget.
But for your, for, to, to run the entity of, 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 of the, the school district, the superintendent, so your office, as you allocate and do the work?
Oh, the district office support staff.
Yes, yes.
You have to do math in your head.
Yeah, I'm, I'm at, I don't.
Guess the man, I'm not gonna hold, yeah.
$500,000.
$500,000, okay. So that's roughly, roughly $1,000 a student.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, in, in my conversation is, you know, one thing I wanna ask is, you know, have you, do you regularly go to the Weed Elementary and talk to them about curriculum? Because why I ask that is, I've, uh, been around the school enough to know that Butteville, the kids from Butteville are more prepared for the high school than, than Weed Elementary.
You said it.
Okay, I said it. But the question is, have you been down to the elementary school talking about curriculum to get this curriculum continuity?
I have not.
Okay, that's one of the issues that?
But, but Ms. Van Barren and Weed High School teachers are stepping into that endeavor, yes.
Wonderful, that's wonderful.
We also have coordinated calendars, and Weed High School gave up the concept of letting our college students who take college classes have a spring break so that Weed Elementary could basically have their say in the calendar, and we went back to the traditional calendar approach.
Then you have the vacations at the same time? Because that's been quite.
All of the school districts in the South County came together and aligned their calendars.
Have you ever, uh, complained to the elementary school that it appears that the kids aren't, the students that are coming up that don't be, don't seem to be prepared for your high school curriculum?
I haven't taken that approach.
Okay. Uh, the, uh, just a couple of things.
You're not the teacher.
Yes. I got, but it's, it's about the district. So all I wanna do now is, you know, like, explain why I'm, why I care, you know, why I'm, oh, why I'm, uh, interested in this is, I believe, it's every February, uh, the school accountability report card comes out. And, uh, what I, I saw that there was only 187, but 190 students. And some interesting numbers come up. Uh, the, uh, first thing is that they're 60% male and 40% female. That's, 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 to me, that's quite a, that's a difference, but nothing we can do about it, but, uh, 4.8 are Asian-American students, 21.9 Hispanic-American students, uh, 4.8 African-American students, 13.4 two or more race. Interesting, I like that. And, uh, 47.6 are white. And, uh, as we look through these, let's say, the English Language Arts, I see that overall, we have, uh, 48.8% that have met or exceeded, met or exceeded the state proficiency level. That's 48%. Out of that, that 48%, 76.4% of them are females, 30%, 30.7% are male. So that means that the, uh, they're, at least half are not meeting the state requirement. Is that, is that what that stat is saying?
I trust your reading of those reports, yes.
Then when it comes to math, we look at, we, it comes to math, we're talking about a, uh, something that scares me, because I do, I'm not a mathematician, but I have went to school, and I really think that, that the math teaches you a lot more than just counting. It's about problem solving. But for students, for all the students at Weed High, it's 13.3% meet, well, that, that's what the studies say, 13.3% have met or exceeded the, uh, proficiency level. Out of that now, you know, the 15, out of the, uh, 17.6% of that is female. The males are down to 10%, 10.7% have met or exceeded the state proficiency level. That concerns me. That concerns me. Uh, the, uh, dropout rate is 9.4%. And, um, the, my concern is, are we graduating people that are not meeting the, uh, the state proficiency level? Because our graduation rate, excuse me, the graduation rate is 83.6.
So Bob, if you're inferring that this unification process would change that?
No.
You're mistaken.
No, no, I'm not at all, not at all. What I'm inferring, what I'm inferring is, there, there are some, there's some numbers here that we better wake up and understand that some of, it appears that we're failing miserably.
And absolutely, those scores are not where we want them to be. For one, those scores came from our 11th graders last year. So it's one class of an 11, one, one class of 11th graders. Those students were just coming back to school. The state required us to give those tests. It was a year that the state is basically throwing out because across the state, we had dramatic dips. So we anticipate seeing much better results this year.
I went back to 2015 and I hadn't seen a great, you know, any, any drastic numbers change.
They had been on the rise pre-COVID.
Yeah.
And we were focused on, uh, increasing and bettering those scores and better preparing our students. Part of that is K-12 articulation, um, with both of our elementary schools and articulation with, uh, the college as well, so that we know our students are prepared to go into Backing up, you know, on, you know, this whole unification process and where we are with it, uh, you know, the other thing that we did is that we, we've been worried about these scores. And through our whole planning process, which is through our local control accountability plan that the state requires, we are required to identify areas of need and areas of focus. Math is one of those areas. Science is one of those areas. And we have just gone through an extensive process of identifying and adopting new curriculum. And we will be purchasing close to $250,000 worth of new curriculum that will be used in all of our classrooms at Weed High School and across the district. Not only, new textbooks don't change scores, but it gives teachers a better starting place, and there'll be further training to go with that as well. Um, so we recognize, um, where our students struggle, and we are working to address those areas. What we don't need is this as a distraction, and this is a divisive distraction. And you, you're not gonna get a study back here to look at and go, geez, we don't like this. Because once it starts, it goes from the county to the state. It's out of your hand. So instead, let's look at scores like this and say, locally, with the resources that we have, because the configuration that we have right now brings the most resources in. We know that. It's not that complicated.
Resources are very important, but also, my point, my point is, is getting the community involved in, so the community understands what's going on, that the community understands these numbers.
We have those places, Bob. We have those places.
Keeping people, keeping people feet held to the fire, like, why is this?
We have those places.
You can't tell me that we're just, we're gonna make it better, you gotta show me.
We are working on that, and we are showing you, and we will be showing you.
That's, that's wonderful. I mean, and, and, and it's time that we, we show. It's time that we, we, uh, put up. And, uh, the main thing is accountability. It's about accountability. And I don't know that the study's going to, you know, do, show us anything other than have, have the conversation, because right now.
Well, let's have that conversation instead of that conversation.
Exactly, well, let's, that's, I'm all open for it. Let's have it.
Well, then, let's focus on that, and we would like to have that with the schools that.
Mayor, our green, I'd like to call a point of order, please.
Okay, my point, my, I'm finishing here now, excuse me.
I know, but you, you're, we're off, off track, Bob.
We're not, we're, as far as educating public, we're not.
I think I'm past my three minutes.
Did you know these numbers?
But, but we're, yes, you're three.
But we're, what we are here to discuss is the unification or non-unification.
And why we would wanna look at it, and why we would want to look at the, the, the study. That's what we're here for. So I, I just wanna finish, you know, I'm, I'm finished with it, and, and as far as, uh, and I really appreciate the people, you know, the, the incentive that the, uh, employees of your district have with this. And, uh, I'm, you know, it, it, I, I can understand when it comes to job security, it's a very, it, it, it's a very sensitive issue. And I know that you care about the kids too, but what we need to do now is have the conversation, does the community really care? Maybe we don't.
There's a point, there's a point of order that's been brought up.
Then get the petitions signed.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
Oh, Mike, wait a minute. What, what day is graduation? Well, they can answer, you don't need to answer.
June 9.
Uh, city council meeting.
6:00 PM.
A, a council meeting again?
Yeah.
Okay. You're gonna have to stop scheduling Weed High School graduation on city council night.
Yes. I missed the last one.
Okay, next.
Am I next?
You are.
Okay, thank you. My name is Jana Blevins. My address is 16834 Lakeshore Drive, Lake Chastina, and I'm the Weed, uh, one of the Weed, um, school board members, representatives.
Which, which, which one, which school are you a member of, the board?
Weed. Siskiyou Union High School District.
Representing Weed.
I'm one of two Weed representatives.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, so what I've heard the people before me say was, um, this could be, that could be, I don't know, I'm worried about, that might not work. My motive is to find out what is the interest, the best interest of our students. And so I think doing the feasibility study will solve all of these questions. It's not that you guys are being asked to split the district apart. It's, we're just asking for a feasibility study that will answer all of these questions. Um, I came from a small, um, K through 12 district in Big Valley. We had a great school. We didn't lack for money. We didn't lack for teachers or administrators or facilities. Um, we probably had more, as a matter of fact, and we produced quality students. Right now, our current senator and our assemblywoman both came from the valley. Um, I don't, um, see it the same way as Mr. Matheson does, that, um, parents that have questions or come with concerns are just a distraction. But I believe that those parents that do come, they feel that. They feel that they are just a distraction and that their concerns and their worries and their, um, cares for the best for their children's education, they're sincere. It doesn't have anything to do with how they feel about teachers or, or administrators. They want the best for their children, and is, are we giving them the best that we can? Local accountability, I feel, would be so much more meaningful if it was from the people of Weed, about the people of Weed. Right now, there's a majority of Mount Shasta people on that board, and they pretty much rule everything. I try my hardest to be a voice for you, but my voice, I don't feel really counts, and it's very frustrating for me, and, um, I just don't see any harm in doing the feasibility study. Please, please consider doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jana. Oh, all right, there's gonna be a race? Oh, okay.
Sorry. I wasn't planning on speaking. My name's Melissa Duffy, and, um, I live at 1800 Blackbeak Drive.
Are you sure?
I'm, I'm new, so no, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Um, like I said, I'm new to the area. I came in October, um, there was a, a need for a teacher here, and so, um, I came as an English teacher. Um, this is, I, this is my ninth year and my fourth district. This is, I, this is my ninth year and my fourth district. So I have experience with many different styles of running things. Many districts that I have been in contact with are the same size or smaller. Most have been smaller. Funding is constantly an issue. And the thing that I worry about, not just for the students, but for the parents who aren't really aware of what this could do to their financial budget, is the fact that these studies, and then if it passes and Weed High School has to become part of a district with Weed Elementary, who is in a financial crisis right now, the city bears the burden, because you're going to be asked, as a city council and as a city, to pass more bonds, to pass more levies, to pass more taxes. And usually that goes to property owners. And as somebody that's trying to buy a piece of property right now, an extra hundred dollars a month because of a tax, or an extra fifty dollars a month because of a tax, means I can't buy a property. So you are really going to put a burden on a community that already is financially struggling. And even though I'm new, I know that because I see my students every day and the way, and the things that they tell me. So think about that when you are trying to decide whether you want to do this feasibility study, that you're not even going to get to look at and you'll have a recommendation given to you that is more than likely going to be followed, because who's gonna go against a state recommendation for something to happen like this? This is a pretty big thing that is gonna impact students. There's lots of kids that are very, very excited about the fact that they could possibly take culinary kids, I know that want that as their career. And to be able to have that is a great option, but if we don't partner with the district, if we don't partner with this other schools and stay in the SIS district, we may not have those options anymore. We won't have French anymore. We won't have, we won't have band, we won't have choir. And I'm telling you, you think those scores are bad now, when you have a bunch of depressed students who can't take anything that's of interest to them and can only take required courses, those scores are going to plummet. Not only that, music is scientifically proven to improve math and science thinking. So these are critical programs to our students' lives.
Thank you, Melissa.
Hi, my name is Randy Scott. My address is fifty-eight-twenty-one Hogan Drive. I am the secretary at Butteville Elementary, as well as a parent of a child at Butteville. And I will have two children at Weed High School next year. I agree pretty much with what everybody said, and you asked not to be repeated, so I agree with pretty much everything that everybody said. But I think we're missing that, correct me if I'm wrong, that there has been a petition put out at least two times that has not passed. And I think that says something. I think that is the community telling you that they don't want it. So it feels very underhanded or sneaky, like we're going around it, around a different way, because you've been told, the community has said no twice, so we're trying to do it a different way. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. And I don't know that either. Anybody else? Oh, I, Tim, I thought, you acted like, we thought you had, we thought you had something.
Already had a bathroom break.
Oh, okay. Any discussion?
Stacy, are you good?
I want to point out a couple of things. Thank you for the, I was at that meeting when the schools met. I sat through it, and you referenced me a few weeks ago. And my question to the two leaders were, have you guys met? They said no. So you're correct. The meeting didn't happen. I thought, I thought they had met too, but I specifically had the two, two leaders met, and they said, we can't. And I didn't have a problem with that. I do have a problem with that. I, I do, my, my, my thinking at the end of the day is, what's best for the youth? Are they gonna have better skills by, I don't care where they go to, if it's called Edgewood High School. Wherever they go to, are the teachers in place that are there that care about it? I appreciate the comments that we got, but let me tell you this, a yes doesn't tell me anything. A no doesn't tell me anything. I need facts, information. And some people were able to provide that, and I appreciate that, on, on both sides. How do I say this? The financial pieces of information, there were some letters that have been sent the early part of the year, January, February, March, that, I don't know if they're correct. I get two different information pieces, so I don't know if that's correct or not. I don't know if, is everything paid for? Is everything okay? I don't know that. Because I got two information pieces, from the state, from the county, and from the school. So that's a concern. And I was here a year ago when we, when we told you twice, go to this, go to the people, I still agree with that, get the information, that get, the feasibility study, I think, is a good thing. To gather information is always gonna be good for whatever you go through. But I, I keep hearing the same things. Yes, we gave you an answer. You didn't like that. And it seems personal, based on how, not social media, but how things are, are communicated or behavior. I, I learned in my human resource management position, my master's, you watch behavior. People can say a lot of things, but you watch behavior. And behavior that I've seen is not equaling to what has been said. I, I go back to that meeting when we were, when we said to go back to each side and talk, and instead, what's said here, there was no meeting. I was acting, I mean, no one talked to anybody. And that's what they call a discussion meeting. It was just a presentation on how the process works. I was there. And I have a concern about that. It, it wasn't a meeting, it was a process explanation. So you know how, how I feel. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm still curious. I hear the term, local accountability. What the heck is that? You know, it's, it's, it's a great two words, but without definition, it means absolutely nothing. There's nothing concrete in those two words. And I've stated before, and if you've seen my position before, even with, with the tax, and although I, I do differ, they've made a decision and that's cool, however, I still believe the easy way is not necessarily the right way. And I will stick with that, whether it be a tax or whether it be a action from this Second of all, as Stacy has mentioned, there is some concern that has not been defined by the Weed Elementary School on financial accountability. And I would say that if they go through some kind of feasibility study, if you are going to combine two institutions, such as the Weed Elementary School or the Weed High, and the Weed High School, there's gonna be, have to be a full audit of those districts. That would be a, a major concern to all of you folks. Second, after that audit, there is a division of assets. I'm not sure who's gonna be giving up what here. It's, it's more of a complicated procedure than just, let's, let's do this, and let's do that, and let's do this, and it'll all happen. It's much more complicated than that. I have been, I don't know, fortunate or unfortunate enough to be a, a member of boards that have tried to combine assets. It's lengthy. It's time-consuming. The last one I was involved with took two years, just in combining assets. So, again, I, I'm one that, again, take, take the right way, not the easy way.
Thank you, Ken. Sue?
Oh, let me interject one thing. Sorry.
It's okay.
In defense of Bob, Bob's major concern is the welfare of, of these children. I will totally agree with that. I disagree in the fact, I'm not sure if combining those two institutions will achieve that. But I do believe in your sincerity, Bob, so don't get me wrong in that.
Ms. Mayor, I, I thank you for that, Ken. And I, and I do care. I honestly do care. And as part of a vendetta, count me out for vendettas. You know, what I'm talking about is the finished product. And, and that's what I'm concerned about. And I, I don't necessarily believe that a study's gonna fix anything, but we're here talking about it. I think that's, that's a win right there, as far as I'm concerned. And as far as the, the council, I, I think that the council has, has heard enough. And I, hopefully I gave you some information that you, that.
You haven't heard me. You haven't heard enough.
That's not the point, I, I said, we've.
He's heard enough.
He's heard enough.
We've heard from him.
We haven't heard from Sue yet.
Anyway.
I have two pages of stuff to say.
Good for you. Good for you.
It's wide-ruled, so.
So anyway, I guess I'm finished.
Are you done?
Did you cut me off?
Nope.
Am I done? I must be. I must be.
You might want to know what I have to say.
I do. I really am interested.
Okay. I have a question to Mr. Bragg. How many students do you have at Butteville?
We have a hundred and seventy at this time.
Okay. I did, I, I looked up statistics of numbers of kids. So I'm actually over. I came up with, wait, I don't want to start there. So Elk Grove School District is one of the largest school districts in the state of California. They have sixty-seven schools. They have sixty-one thousand students. And their superintendent is paid three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year. Now, he does have, I have a couple of friends that work there, he's got many assistant superintendents for a bunch of different categories. So then I researched where I went to school, in Redding. And the Redding School District has nine schools in it. They have about three thousand students, but I'm kind of wondering how close my stats are. There might be too many. Their superintendent makes a hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, and that does not include the benefits, which I know are added on at the end. Shasta Union High School District, they have about forty-five-hundred-plus students. And that superintendent is making two-hundred-and-ten thousand. And, and I don't think any of these people make too much money. I think none of them make enough for what they're doing. I feel the same way about teachers. So there's what I'm going with that. So when I researched, there are nine schools in the South County, starting with Butteville and going south. So there's Butteville, Weed High School, Weed Elementary, Sisson, Mount Shasta Elementary, Mount Shasta High School, McLeod High School, McLeod Elementary, Denzimer High School, Denzimer Elementary. There are seven districts in those nine schools. Right now, four of those seven districts need superintendents. I'm sorry to laugh, but I hope they get them. Because I sat on the school board for eight years. It's not an easy thing to do. It's not easy to find teachers. It's not easy to find superintendents. It's not easy to find principals. It's not easier to find policemen either. But that's not our point. So in this, in the South County, I came up with about sixteen-hundred students that would be in South County with nine schools. And I'll go back to three thousand in nine schools. And I think Shasta Union High School has probably five or six schools with forty-five-hundred students. So what I, oh, and then here's my main point of that. Of those nine schools in the seven districts, we are paying superintendents seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars to, for their, to be superintendents in these nine schools. So if we want to do what's right for the kids, we could pay this one superintendent, I don't know, a hundred-and-sixty thousand, with the same thing Guy in Redding's getting, for the nine schools. So if we really, really wanted to do what's right for the kids, because I had kids at Weed High School, my children went to the college, my children went back and forth to Mount Shasta High School and Weed High School, they have programs. My daughter was in music, so she had to go to Mount Shasta. I, I, I'm, I understand all of that stuff. But if we really wanted to do what was right for the kids, because they're all our kids, the, the information, what it, what we need to do is do research to make a nine-school South County district. It would have to be, it would be K-12. There's, there's three superintendents that I'm assuming, I don't know you, I'm assuming you're a good superintendent, I think, you know, the three that are hopefully still employed within the next two years. The rest of these are all retiring. I don't know if any of them would be the right person for it, but that could be the research. So I think the, the, to spend money on research for two schools to get combined, because possibly a third one doesn't want to be involved, is a waste of money, as the research needs to go to see if we can get nine schools. And right there, we can save seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So that's my, that's my two cents.
A quick question on your math, is if you have nine schools and nine principals, do you have principals involved as well?
Well, sure, but they all have principals now.
The South County does.
Every one of these schools has a principal now. Are you, you a principal superintendent?
Some are both.
Right, right. And most of them are.
Sometimes a teacher.
Right.
It could be. It could be a bus driver.
Right, yeah. Well, and possibly, I, I know my friend in Denzimer is the substitute teacher randomly.
And I have pictures of Mr. Matheson wiping, mopping the floor.
Yeah. So.
He did a good job, too.
Well, and unfortunately, as what happened with Scott Valley, when they decided to combine their, and make one district, they lost a school. So there's the chance of that happening. Who knows what's to say? We do have weather issues of, you know, kids getting over the hill and back and forth, so we, there's a possibility that the schools would stay open. But yeah, if, if, if the money's gonna be put out there to do that research, that's the research I think should be done.
So you're asking for a?
No! I'm not asking for that.
She's not asking, she's just making a comment.
I'm just making a comment.
Okay. We need a feasibility study for that also.
Somebody'd need to do it.
Yeah. Okay.
But what she's doing, I think what she's doing is raising the question, if we're looking at just doing two schools.
Why aren't we going bigger?
Why aren't we doing nine?
Yeah.
And there is some financial, that, that still doesn't take away from financial problems, but it, there's six or seven-hundred-thousand dollars annually there that could help a couple problems anyway. Or maybe books, or maybe whatever.
Okay. So.
There's a plan at the county office for it, so.
So I guess it's my turn. And this has not been an easy decision. It has not been easy conversations. It has not been easy reading the pros and the cons and trying to make a decision. I am a graduate of Weed Elementary School and Weed High School. And I feel like I've been successful enough for my little small town. So I appreciate the education that I received at both entities. And I sat down today and, and, and wrote myself a letter and, because I knew I couldn't say everything, I wouldn't remember everything I wanted to say. So first of all, I want to thank everybody that, that has come to us personally, by email, you know, we asked and, and you responded. And I do appreciate that. I said last month that I don't feel that this is a, a decision that should come from a city council. But I'm sure that whoever came up with this policy or ed code lived in a much bigger city where they had more, maybe this made sense. I think this is a matter that really should be made by a county office of education. And I wouldn't go to the county office of education and ask them what our city should do with our money. Or what suggestions they had for us, or would they approve something we wanted to do in our city? That, it, it just boggles me that this process is even in place. As we've all said, it's been several months since this matter first came in front of us. And since that time, there's been plenty of time to put up a little table and sit out in front of Ray's and sit out in front of grocery outlet on a Saturday afternoon and get the two-hundred-and-sixty-six signatures needed to, two-twenty-six. Two, two-twenty-six, to put this measure on the ballot. That being said, I have received a lot of emails and personally spoke to others. I think it's probably about a fifty-fifty split of those. I think it's probably about a 50-50 split of those who were for, those who were against. And everybody had their pros and cons of what the unification would be. Most of the emails in favor go on to speak as if the study will prove the feasibility of this unification. So, what if it doesn't? Please remember, we're not voting here at the city level on whether we should unify or not. We are voting on just a study to be done, which will take years. A few of the emails we received said, "Do the study. It's free." Nothing's free. I don't think that there's an employee sitting at the county office of education getting paid waiting for somebody to bring this to them so that they could start doing some research. So, that means someone's going to have to be hired, maybe more than one person. Or employees that are already working there are going to start taking on more than what they were hired to do, and now we're probably paying them overtime. And the same goes at the state level. Barbara Dillman was here last month and spoke about how the unification of Scott Valley Schools was done. The interested parties met. They did their own little research. They came up with an agreement that was beneficial to their students, not their administration. And they unified without involving anybody else. And it's working for them. While I worked for ROP, which stands for Regional Occupational Programs, the talk for unification in Happy Camp came up several times. Given their distance from everything else, at first, I thought, "That's a great idea." But once those parties got together and discussed the possibilities, they found that it was not financially beneficial to them or to their students to unify. So, they never went any further. Back when district boundaries dictated where a student had to go to school, regional occupational programs, also known as vocational programs, also known as career technical education, were labeled as such so that students from one school could take classes at other schools. So, for example, when I started with ROP, there was an automotive program in Mount Shasta and a welding program in Weed, and those students traveled back and forth. Through my time there, I saw students in Wairika traveling back and forth with their sister schools, and kids from Weed High School going as far as McLeod to take culinary arts. And it worked. That is one of the things that would be given up if this unification took place. So, in order to create, or... In order to create meaningful CTE programs, Siskiyou Union High School, under the leadership of Dick Holmes and Mike Matheson, passed several bond measures, which I personally was involved with, and used that funding to build or refurbish programs which prepared students for entry-level employment or post-secondary education. One of the main focuses of what I did in career tech education was creating K-14 pathways. And that means that the elementary school students, our teachers, worked with the high school teachers, that the high school would tell the elementary what they needed, those kids to know by the time they got there, and they worked together to make that happen. The same thing happened between the high school and the college. They worked not just with COS, but other junior colleges throughout the state of California. Many of them are concurrently enrolled, so they will have college credits when they graduate from high school. If unification happens, not just Weed High School, but all of Siskiyou Union High School's CTE students will no longer have this benefit. Yes, I believe that every student should have the ability and the opportunity to go to college. But that doesn't mean that it's got to be four years. It means there are several trades that most of our students are choosing right now. And I don't want, after we've put in so much work here at Siskiyou County, I don't want to see that go away. As much as I think the study will show the same as it did for Happy Camp, I am not in favor of getting it on the ballot through the city council. Thank you. Yes? He looked like he wanted to say something.
I'd like to move on to staff reports.
Okay. Well, we need to entertain a motion, one way or the other.
Well, no, we have...
No motion?
No motion? Are you... If somebody wants to make a motion...
I'll make a motion that we, I'll state this, consider that we request a public hearing for the consideration of reorganization of the Weed High School and Weed Union Elementary School districts.
Do we have a second?
And I want to thank everybody for the conversation. This is where I've been. I really think it's been good. Thank you.
It appears we do not have a second. So, the motion dies. Thank you. We'll move on to staff reports. Justin?
Can we take a short recess?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
We need to take...
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, I bet you are.
Re-adjourn in like 10 minutes.
Okay. 8:17, please.
I'm going to go eat dinner.
Thank you.
My leg is sore.
Bob?